No, I can read it this way. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, April 24th Board of Education meeting. I'd like to take your roll of coffee. Chair Navlani here. Vice Chair Matt Reo here. Secretary of Defense Hannah here. Judy Gannon.
Present.
Zachary Canada.
Here.
Tim Dawson here. Victoria Lanza here. Please join us in saluting the flag.
I salute you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Visitors, please limit your comments to items on our agenda. Were there no visitors?
Oh, no.
Now we'll hear from our student representatives. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay.
Getting a little senioritis?
Yeah. Definitely.
Let's talk about that.
State mandated SATs testing for grade 11 to place on April 2nd. Guidance counselors, Melinda Ball, organized test administration, including the proctor training, pre-registration process, and school day schedule. Once again, the NBHS participation rate exceeded the state required target of 95%.
State mandated NGSS testing for grade 11 took place on April 8th. Science Department Chair Ryan Tugrowski organized the test administration, including proctor training, registration process, and the school day schedule. Once again, the NBHS participation rate exceeded the state required target of 95%.
The NBHS junior prom is scheduled for tomorrow, April 25th, and will be held at Mill Pond and Norfolk. NBHS is one of few high schools in the intermediate area, intermediate area, and the Shoreline Conference still offering and providing a junior and senior prom.
Mrs. Xander and Mrs. Salvati have started the NBHS boutique. The boutique provides gently used clothing supplies and apparel for students to wear during dances, proms, and job interviews. Donations can be arranged by contacting the staff via email. At the onset of April, a detective from the North Branford Police Department visited the NBHS health classes. Collaborating with health instructor Mrs. LaCroix, Detective Peroli provided grade 11 and grade 12 students with an overview of the laws regarding sexual harassment and sexual assault. The students were also provided with safety and prevention tips as mandated by the state curriculum for health education.
On March 18th, Mr. Vazquez's classes hosted two guest speakers from the film industry. A movie director and an actor provided students with an overview of the film industry and career opportunities for students who went forward in this career path. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have in my notes for later, but I know you're going to leave, so I just wanted to congratulate you on your participation in Pippin, which was excellent.
It was great.
I really enjoyed it, so thank you so much.
And congratulations on getting accepted to Yale.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Such an accomplishment.
Can we talk about your scholarship and everything? Just refreshing my memory. We're amongst.
We're amongst greatness.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Class dismissed.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
It's gonna be 75 tomorrow Sunday. Make sure all the seniors are there.
On a Friday?
Seven, seven o'clock. Bye, guys.
Okay, moving on, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the April 24th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. So, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um... Superintendent's report. Oh, yeah. Superintendent's report.
Briefs are included. A lot of good things going on. You heard about the prom. Everyone's busy. Testing is coming up. Getting prepared for that, so we're seeing a break in the weather. You'll get some pictures tomorrow of the outdoor cafeteria at the high school with probably 50 kids out there just enjoying the beautiful scenery and friendships. So, we're good there for the briefs, and Martha will turn it over to the finance report.
Attached is your finance report. I apologize for getting the transfers to you late this afternoon, but I wanted to make sure I could get as many in as I could. In reviewing the packet, I just wanted to include the email that we received from Tyler Technologies regarding the punch button, so you have all that. And jumping to the monthly report, you'll see for the month of March, we had $1.7 million in salaries that were spent, $419,000 in benefits, and then the remainder of the expenditures, which totaled $645,000, for a total of $2.7 million spent in the month of March, which is pretty equivalent to the past two months. So, hopefully, you're starting to see some patterns now that we've done this for a full quarter. In jumping to the year-to-date, I mentioned the billable again, and I just want to remind you, the reason why I mention this to you is because even though it is a negative on your report, this is money that we are waiting to be reimbursed from. We pay salary out to teachers who work in our enrichment classes at the two elementary schools or for building rentals, for custodial use, and other things like that. And so, when we pay those salaries out, we are getting the funds back from those particular organizations, and so, once those checks are deposited, those negatives will go away. So, I bring that to your attention for two reasons, because yes, it is a negative, but the second reason is because we're going to be reimbursed for that.
Martha, are those done fairly timely from the organizations who?
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually a month, you know, maybe sometimes five weeks difference.
So, that's not horrible, though?
No.
They're pretty timely.
Yeah, no, they're pretty timely.
Thank you.
Reviewing the substitutes again, as you can see, I broke it out for you between our substitute teachers, which are the daily ones that we call in using our frontline system, substitute paras, nurses, and custodians. Those numbers are year-to-date. So, year-to-date, we have spent $96,000 in substitutes. Health insurance, the same thing. It is shown as a negative, 522, that we're waiting for when we budget for health insurance. I budget for gross expenditures, meaning the Board of Ed pays out the entire bill, and then we are reimbursed on a bi-weekly basis from our employees, and that money that we get through payroll contribution is then credited to that line. So, that's why you see from month to month, those negatives are coming down because we're posting our payroll contribution back to that line. We did receive our first OPEB invoice in the amount of $58,000. I still do have money encumbered there. I'm waiting to see if we get another invoice from the town's actuary. If we do not receive another invoice, then that purchase order will be closed, and the funds will return back to that line. Transportation, you will see a budget transfer later on for both transportation and the late runs. Electricity, we've spoken a lot about electricity. You'll see some transfers presented to you later on. These will just be partial because I do not have, you know, $300,000 at my disposal at the moment to transfer, but then, of course, remember, those encumbrances are estimates, so we wouldn't want to move anything that we're not certain on. So, you will see some transfers, but I'm just letting you know that it's not for the entire amount. No new news for Fund 25. I did include the section from the state statute there, just so that you have it. In regards to the Family Resource Center, they're still doing very well, showing a year-to-date net income of $62,000 to date. The food service right now has improved. We're showing a year-to-date loss of $1,500. So, that year-to-date revenue is $548,000 received, and year-to-date expenditure expenditures so far is $549,000. We did serve 772 breakfast meals at the high school in March and 15,719 lunches, which is actually 42 less than March of last year.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on either the monthly expenditure or the year-to-date expenditure report that is included?
I do.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, the teaching and learning for $357,494, what did that cover?
Where are you?
Teaching and learning, it's on the month, it's on page one.
Oh, so those are all the, those are all the accounts that would encompass teaching and learning, so instructional supplies, anything in our account number sequence that has a 01002222901 or 2921, those are all our programs.
Okay.
So, anything that is not facility-related, salary, benefit, transportation, or utility basically falls under, under that.
Okay. I don't, I mean, I'm looking at those numbers, it just doesn't, I don't...
It's all the other lines added up.
Okay. I just would like a, just an accounting kind of what, why, is that unusual a cost for monthly, or is that just this particular month?
It's not one account number.
I know.
It's a whole...
Multiple.
Yes. So, if you, if you look at the monthly expenditure report, on the first page, in the middle of the page, to the right, you're gonna see a subtotal of $1,726,000.
Mm-hmm.
That is all your salary lines added up. Then you're gonna see all of the health insurance lines. Those are all your object from 210 to 270. You're first gonna see a subtotal that just shows you our health expenditure for the month of March, less what we received from our employees, and then there's a subtotal over to your right of $316,000. Then below that, on line 270 where work and compensation is, that's a subtotal of all the other 200 lines that you see.
Okay.
So, those two numbers, the 316 and the 102, add up to the 419. There's, where I got the benefit. So, then if you turn, if you keep turning, I believe the highlight is hard to see, but on the third page, you'll see highlighted 560, 561, 563. That's your tuition total. You'll see it there, $88,530.
Right.
And then the remainder is just really, you know...
All of this...
Formulas adding up to those other numbers.
Is it things like software and other supplies and other office supplies?
Yes.
Digital subscriptions and all that stuff?
Yeah, instructional textbook, workbook, resource books, purchase service. Okay.
All right. Got it? I got it.
It's just a quick summary. It's not meant to, you know, call anything out. It was just trying to block some numbers together for you to make sense of what you were looking at for the month.
Okay.
Any other questions on the reports? If not, we'll move on to the transfers.
Okay, on to the transfers.
So, you'll see the first two transfers are extremely long, and it's basically because I was trying to take from accounts where I was pretty certain that we would not be needing the funding there to cover our solar lines. So, for instance, there was $25 left in a custodial uniform line at Totucket, so I took that and transferred it over to a solar line. So, that, that is why, if you look down this very long list here on the first page, the numbers are quite small, but I didn't want to make any transfers that I would have to undo or that I wasn't completely certain of.
Okay, makes sense.
That's why, honestly, it took so long for me to get these done for you because I wanted to be very careful in what I was transferring and why.
Makes sense. Martha?
Yes.
Why at the bottom of that list, on the second page, it says subtotal zero?
Because that means all your negatives equal your positives, and there's no difference.
All right, so where the, the only, what's the positive? I know you said the, the first two cancel each other out, it's 48.
93.
93. Can't let those cancel out?
Yeah, those cancel, and then the other two positives there is the $28,000 and the $6,000.
Right.
So, that's $34,000.
Okay. So, everything equals 34 or all your transfers?
No, everything is, all your negatives equal your positives. When you're, when you're doing accounting, everything balances.
Right.
So, that's why everything is always a zero because what you're putting in, you're taking out or vice versa.
Okay. Makes sense to me. Okay. But what account got the transfers?
So, anything that you see with a positive number...
Got.
Money was transferred into.
Into, okay.
Anything where you see a negative, we take, we took funding away.
Okay. So, you took funding from everywhere, from all these places, and you put it into solar electricity at the auditorium?
And the high school.
And, right.
Yep.
That's where everything else went.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And then the same thing for transfers into the line to cover the overage that we currently have for the athletic ice rink rental. On the third page, you'll see we're moving transportation, summer school, $6,000 into our regular student transportation line because we do not receive a bill for our summer transportation. Same thing for special education transportation. We're moving...
So, basically, when you're budgeting, you put the $6,000 there even though we're not gonna get, just because that's how much it would be for, for the summer transportation?
Because I didn't know at this time...
At that time.
Or wasn't confident at this time last year or when we did the budget...
Gotcha.
That we weren't going to get...
I didn't know if you just did it like as a placeholder kind of thing?
No, that's one of those things that kind of has been on the books.
Gotcha.
And then eventually, for whatever reason, Daco started putting that, bundling that cost into our regular contract.
I wasn't sure if you had to, I didn't, no, what I meant was I wasn't sure if you had to show like $6,000 would have been what it costs for summer transportation.
No.
You know, you know, you know what I'm trying to say?
Right, right.
Like if it, like if you have $100,000 for transportation, regular ed all year is $75,000, summer is, you know, $20,000, and special ed is $5...
Because I can't pull out specifically the cost for that, then I can't report on it, so I'm not gonna code it that way.
Yep, totals, makes sense. And we verified that we will not be getting a charge for summer?
I haven't gotten one for, I think, two years now because it's built into our annual contracts.
So, we're confident moving forward?
Yes.
We won't need that anymore.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then we're funding our transportation special education line that we're currently over by $49,000, and we're taking funding from our non-public tuition special education We're covering the sewer assessment at the high school that we're currently over on, a small repair and maintenance at the auger house that we're over on, cleaning up the telephone lines. There was a, when you added all those up together, there was a $750 difference, so we're transferring basically $750 from a cellphone at the intermediate school over to cover all of those telephone bills. And then the same thing, instructional supply admin at the intermediate school, we're covering instructional supply IT at the high school. We're covering $2,500 for our frontline technology out of our financial software line. A new basketball hoop that we have for the Jerome Harrison Playground, we need a $3,500 to cover that, so the transfers are reflected there. The purchase of carpet mats for the intermediate school, and then two library memberships for both Jerome and the intermediate school for roughly $85. Shortage on the property service line for facilities and a shortage on our professional services line here at the central office.
Does our mental agreement with the town state state that we are in charge of the money for repairs and maintenance of the auger house? I don't...
Am I leased?
Yeah.
It's always been like that. When there's a repair, we own it. When there's a rental, they own it. So, I repair the auditorium, checks go back to Town Hall. I repair the auger house.
No, you don't give me...
Yeah, I don't rent it out.
Certainly, you don't give reimbursement for it, because repairs are right.
No.
You're welcome.
All right. Do you, any, do you hear a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the budget, budget line item transfers as submitted. One second. Second. Oh, you have it. Sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay.
We should, just...
Yeah, make a motion.
You, no, you skipped communications. I didn't know if you wanted to, if anybody had...
No, I did. Board of Ed briefs.
Board briefs.
You did them?
Yeah. I said there's a lot of good things going on.
Okay, I skipped it. I fell asleep.
Administrators, testing.
I didn't, usually somebody says something about, something about them, and nobody did, so I said, I must have missed that.
I did miss that.
Judy usually doesn't say something.
The joys of being in education in April, May, and June, when the weather changes and kids are wanting to yep outside.
Can we hear a motion for the graduation date? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024-2025 graduation date, and the last day of school as Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. I will second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, the next healthy food certification, the top three are the ones that we're gonna need to get action on. That's what we've been doing since 2016, '17. It's been the most efficient, effective way for us to recoup funding to, to help with our food service program, so that's what we'd like to continue to do.
Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-215A, the North Branford Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The North Branford Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, provided that the following conditions are met: the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend; the sale is at the location of the event; and the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales. Okay. All in favor, please, somebody has a second?
Oh.
Second? Okay. Great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The North Branford Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met: one, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend; two, the sale is at the location of the event; and three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sale. Second. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay.
Go through that one.
North Branford Summer Camp. You know, graduation is on the 10th officially, and shortly after that, our summer camp will be starting. We'll be back over at Totucket Valley. Majority of the workers are graduates and staff members. Amber Lake and Megan Barnes, two teachers that are currently on staff at this, run the camp. They do a phenomenal job. This camp has a rich history. The academic components are outstanding. It's not just show up and create chaos. It's organized, it's, the kids love it. They take a lot of day trips, they do arts, crafts, activities, scientific things, and we're really excited for it this year. So, the theme is Dog Days of Summer. We had a young man design the T-shirt, and it came out fantastic, they're adorable. So, if you're driving around in the summer and you see a lot of kids in dog T-shirts, stop by and bark.
What's the age group?
I was just gonna say, what's the...
The ages are...
Is it K through 5?
It's the eighth grade, I think.
You age out in eighth grade, so it's anything below up to eighth grade.
Okay.
But then a lot of times, the kids come back at high school as counselors.
Yeah. So, is it K, is it K through 8?
Okay, entering first grade.
I'm sorry, first.
Entering first grade.
Entering first grade.
Okay, so entering first grade and up to...
Up to eighth grade.
And eighth, okay.
Yeah. So, we, kids of eighth grade will do the water-themed parks, the fishing trips, the, they love it. Now the paddle ball, not paddle...
Pickle.
Pickle ball. All right, I'm, I'm moving on, all right? Town manager pending requests. How much time do we have? No. I had a meeting before our meeting, our last meeting, the budget meeting, with UI and the solar company, and you've heard numerous times our frustration with this. There was some interesting comments made about the entire process, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna share just an email that business manager Martha Vaughn authored in July of 2023, sharing concerns about the solar and UI formula for how credits were being saved, earned what we were paying. How come, you know, there was, there was no guidance on this, and it's been a disaster. But, you know, this is an old problem that people have known about for a couple of years, and I'll leave it at that. Since my meeting with, when I say my, I'm sorry, with Martha, Tom Lonsdale, and Lori Roach, our council payable, we had a very open, honest conversation with members of the council, the town manager, UI, the solar company, and we're able to clearly articulate our frustrations in how this was a lose-lose situation for the North Branford Public Schools. Since that time, I've received a phone call, we received a phone call from UI. It seems like the rules are gonna change a little bit and that some credits may be coming back our way, which will assist us, especially with our shortfall of $2 million, I can't even say it, of $2 million next year. So, if there's light at the end of the tunnel, no pun intended, with the electric company and the solar, if it was us complaining enough and demanding a meeting face-to-face with the two parties, and they both wanted to go offline and have conversations, it was well worth it. So, our expectation is, is that the field, the level, the playing field will be leveled, and these absorbent solar fees that we're paying, coupled with our UI charges in a building that's running twice the amount that the old building was running, about $24,000 a month. about $24,000 a month, which is astronomical. It didn't have an energy audit done prior to going into it. This is good news at a good time. So I want to thank those who sat through me, sat with me. I'm struggling. Still haven't recovered from that budget meeting. Moving forward, I'll leave it at that. The email summarizes everything. It emphasizes our continued questioning, pressuring for, this isn't adding up, this isn't working. Our biggest building, our most expensive complex, we need help here.
Are they going to move some of the...
Yes.
Credits from the smaller buildings to the high school? They're willing to do that?
Well, they're willing. And I think they're more than willing now because of the demonstration of how frustrated we were and how it was not helping the biggest account in town. The smaller buildings, it's great. You've got five years of credits that we'll never use. That doesn't help us in a building that we're going backwards in on a campus with 300,000 square feet of space. So.
Well, I want to thank you guys very much for staying persistent on it, taking the time, banging your head on the wall enough to make them do something. Make them do something about it. Because I wonder how many other places don't just go along with it. They probably weren't used to the challenge from you guys, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Lori Roach, Tom, and Martha were very instrumental with having all the data, understanding and, and, you know, helping to emphasize that this has to end, so.
Martha?
Yeah.
Did you ever actually get any answer on why, we asked two years ago, why this bill is double? Have we gotten an answer? Or is it just...
We were asking the same questions on Monday.
There's 160 emails that I have that have gone to UI since this started. 160. I just selected one from a couple of years ago to give you a timestamp.
I think this highlights when we were told we asked them the other last time. We've been asking.
There's 160 emails that have been authored to UI.
And no answer.
And the very last line is the most poignant one.
So it certainly wasn't an 11th hour ask. Correct.
I'll just reference the email.
So I have a question about... Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Zachary.
Altus, we have a point of contact for Altus or town?
The town. The town authored the contract and signed the contract five years ago.
Incorrect, I'm wrong. That was somebody was, that was not a, point of contact was not identified. Is that what it was from previously? Or no, am I wrong? I might be wrong there, sorry. But now that we have, we have point of contacts for each one of these entities.
Well, there's, there's been point of contact since they signed the contract. There's a, there's a rep for UI.
Yeah.
And there's a rep for Altus.
Have they been changing? Do you know what I mean?
I, I don't know their employment status. The accounts haven't changed, so.
I mean, I just know from like, if they're moving, rotating, or leaving the company or whatever.
When I wrote that email, I included... No, I'm just saying, I included anybody that I thought may have a hand in it.
Copy everybody.
Because nobody was listening.
Exactly.
So.
This is like a lifeline, a lifeboat. Exactly. That's why I'm asking. Like, sometimes, I mean, I only see, I see one guy on UI here.
Because we didn't have the names at that point.
But I don't see, right, and I don't see an Altus at the time, so that's why I was like wondering.
So my question has to do with the solar fees. So it seems like the electrical bills are getting worked out. Will there be any change in the solar fees as well?
That's the $240,000 question that we...
Okay, so we still have, we're not completely done.
No.
But we've got, we're on the path.
We're on the path.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. All right, that really stressed me out. So I'm gonna relax a little bit right now. I want you to close your eyes. So Mr. Stuffler, come up and please introduce a special guest that I invited to be here this evening. This is called a little break in the action. It's therapeutic.
Jeremy, the, the, the... His mom, Jeremy, who had a few students, he committed to you and they used to speak, correct?
Hi.
Students all six of them, Berkeley.
Gosh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Student is in the top 20% of our class in those political grades, considering from chamber choir to forensics, to music, to maybe studio art, down the list. So he's quite accomplished. He was a schoolmaker. Met Jeremy, knows Jeremy, heard about his act, played part in the form group.
Oh, nice!
No pressure, young man.
He's a poser in form.
Wow.
Sit with his chair over here.
This is the chair that usually does not sit.
What a nice treat. We could use this right now.
So, you know, just for the record, I requested this long before the budget season.
Debacle?
Well, no, but then, you know, I wanted to get him here. I wanted him to walk in with me. We had this whole thing planned out, and that, of course, didn't work out, so.
He's gonna be on there.
It's important to highlight the talents in this small community, a small town, of a student that gets into Berkeley.
Absolutely.
Come on, two seats down, the young man's going to Yale. Three seats down, full scholarship, room, board, tuition, everything to UConn.
Oh, she did?
She did.
Oh, yeah. You must have missed that meeting.
So it speaks, you know, that's why we're here. This is why we're...
And UConn received 60,000 applicants. It's the highest they've ever received this year, so to get in...
To get in and go for free.
Yeah, and it's a huge, huge accomplishment.
Gosh.
Lucky.
We do.
Do you want to, while we're studying, make the motion to executive session?
Sure, sure. So before we go on, I would like to make a motion to add item 7I grievance under the superintendent's report to the April 24, 2024 Board of Education meeting agenda for discussion. This agenda item is executive session eligible.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
So we'll do that after, we'll go into executive session after we go to the board.
You know, these are what, these lives?
Got enough things to plug into.
UNH, nice and close for mama.
Yes, it is.
My son went there.
Or two crooks.
At times, at times. Too close for him to do his own laundry.
Do you want to do the policy? Police, huh? Very?
Um, we, we have the, um, a high school renovation project there.
I have. Actually, I have a quick update. That's mine, so. All right, 40, 40 total punchless items right now remaining compared to 60 from last month. So they were working all equal break. I saw them everywhere like bees. The landscape washout at the West Hill at the gym, they're underway. They're working on the catch basin. They're gonna remove it, and they're gonna close that out, replant, and do that. Handrail in the gym going up is in. I'll leave it that it's in, and it's more effective than it was. Floor expansion joists replaced in phase 2nd and 3rd floor. There's a wooden cover up right now that the piece was too small. They gotta replace it. But it's not a trip hazard right now, so that's good news. Asphalt repair needed, the student parking lot. They're gonna do all the paving over again and do fencing, if you're not aware of that. From the excess money in the project, the committee decided to do significant paving and then to put new fencing in as well. As you heard the other night, I sent our project back to permanent project. They can do what they want with the building of the storage building. I want that money for salary, for my teaching staff.
Can I ask just a question on the, the, the storage facility? Did you, are there any donations that we receive that we have to return or do anything with?
No, no. So everything, $83,000 was pre-purchased from a year ago. I'm sitting on a $5,000 donation from the Ed Foundation, which I'll either return to them or have them donate to the project. However it goes. Whiteboard ghosting, erasing issues, I've been talking, and that's been a hot topic. There are the spray-on boards in the classrooms, and they were leaving marks and smudging. So they have been going in and changing the cleaner and the markers. We're going back and forth with them. So hopefully, they're gonna replace them and re-coat them this summer, or this new product and the new pen is gonna be effective and work. But they were, they were there two days over the break, and I was there, and they were all going around testing.
They're supposed to like check out a room or something.
They've done, they've done multiple rooms.
They're testing one section, just make sure that new paint and the old paint, right?
Right. Gym bleachers. The school logo on the bleachers, it's gonna be expanded, and it'll be centered in the bleachers. And that was the architect that, that did that. You tell me when. Okay, so with that being said, without any further ado, mom, feel free to take pictures, video. It's a gig. This is a gig.
Hey, what a free gig, free tickets.
I'm just gonna perform just two short songs for you guys. First one being Never Going Back Again by Fleetwood Mac. And then I was just gonna do Time by Pink Floyd. I was just gonna do the solo into the end.
Perfect.
With Fleetwood Mac.
Where's the roadies?
We've got the show on the floor. We flick our lights.
I was gonna get my...
We have some 70, 80 rockers in here. We're ready for it.
Like, I'm surprised the young kids don't Fleetwood Mac.
I know.
Listen, don't hop up on the table. I can't afford to replace them.
If not, that's okay, but is it possible to use one of the speakers to backtrack or?
What speaker?
Any, any speaker?
Tom says no.
Do these work?
They don't work.
Tom says no.
Oh, these.
I'm like, oh, that, no. I don't even know like that.
I don't think they, I don't think they work.
Okay. Good question.
Right.
Are you gonna be a music major?
Yeah. Yeah, um, my specific major is music, sound engineering, like sound recording.
Wow, okay, that's great.
Well, good luck to you.
Yes, good luck. Go Chargers.
I know, right? Thank you guys for having me today.
Thank you so much.
Much appreciated.
That was nice.
That was the best board of ed meeting ever.
That's why people are true.
Exactly. Committee reports.
Now you gotta follow that. Good luck.
Negotiations, no meeting. Budget and operations, no meeting. Curriculum instruction and strategic planning. Was there a curriculum meeting this evening?
Yes, yeah.
Who wants to...
I don't, I will co-offer it, I guess, but whoever's...
Go for it.
Judy and myself are there. We discussed SEL across, like, how it works from pretty much K through, the whole district wide. We had a special guest, Christina, and I'm sorry, I didn't get her last name. Somebody help me.
Colangelo.
Thank you. Who took the show, I imagine, on this one. She, she went down to Atlanta to the...
Ron Clark Academy.
RCA, I think. What is it called?
Ron Clark Academy.
Thank you. Why don't you take over?
No, that's...
Yeah, so anyway, this RCA Academy down in Atlanta is a funded event, correct? It's a, on a... How'd we get her down there? It was on a...
It was a workshop that she chose to attend.
Yeah, okay, there you go, right there. So we set it down in 2003, 23, and we came back with some information to implement this house system, which is new to me. I haven't seen one Harry Potter movie, just to be honest. But it sounds like it's, maybe I should, based on what you, what you came back with. And it sounds like it's, it's gonna be utilized across all of MAS, starting maybe next year, perhaps? Sorry if I gave away the secret, but... And it's, it's supposed, it's, from what I gather, it's working fantastic. It has a lot of potential. And I'm just happy that we, you know, had a chance to listen, like firsthand, what it was to be, you know, what you're, what you're doing and what Carter's allowing, I guess, or permitting, whatever you're doing, Carter.
Don't be like that.
Yeah. No, but, you know, authorizing her to go for it, and that's great. Appreciate it. Anything else you guys have to fill in?
No, it's good. Thank you. Thank you.
Very nice. Pension, no meeting. Policy, I think we're meeting next month? Policy?
Beth has a policy.
We'll have a policy for second week?
Yes, go for that, Beth.
I'll second.
Okay. Any, any discussion on that, anybody? No? Let's take our vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Aces, no attendance. Building committee.
We already did that.
Well, technically, we didn't meet on Monday, but just got to.
Okay. Communication, no meeting. New business? Nope. Visitors and press.
Visitors and press? Visitors, any visitors? No. We've had our visitors. We had a nice concert. Anything for good of the board?
I have a couple of things I just wanted to say. I wanted to congratulate Jerome Harrison for their Festival of the Arts, which was a very um, exciting and fun evening. Um, and congratulate Ms. Mizinski and Mrs. Luchan. Did I say those right? Okay, great. Um, for all of their work to put that together. Um, also, I, I said a little bit earlier, but congratulations to Robin and Cindy Genzano and their cast for the amazing show Pippin. I almost didn't go because I didn't know the show, and then I kind of was like, well, I need to go, and it was absolutely amazing. So I, I really came away with a, a smile on my face that night. It was excellent. And finally, to um, Missy Lee for inviting me to the SAT pep rally, which was really quite amazing. So it was, it was nice to see that spirit of we're all in this together and let's, let's get it. So um, I appreciated that.
An SAT pep rally?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
Were there cheerleaders? Well, I might have been a cheerleader. I might have been a cheerleader.
Your little, your, your granddaughter.
My, oh, well, I thought you were talking about me, Scott. No, my granddaughter was the cheerleader.
Our young cheerleader and our younger cheerleader.
Yeah, yeah. But um, it was really neat to see a lot of my former students in that, in that arena, so thank you.
Awesome. Um, our next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, May 22nd, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per Section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statute, as permitted by Section 1-206A of the Connecticut General Statutes, to discuss agenda item 7I.
Second.
We are adjourned to go into executive session. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.